Some of our recruiting efforts, I'll give you an update on some personnel in terms of that recruiting. So I have some historical data for you here. Some of the things you have in your packet I've updated, so what I present is the most recent areas of change from what I sent to you earlier. So we start out the year fourteen fifteen with eight open teaching positions that we weren't able to fill. We did add one new position last year. We had eight non-renewals. And we had four people that were non-renewed based on testing or licenses, that didn't get their testing requirements done. So they weren't able to be licensed and you have to be licensed in order to be employed. So we had four people that fell in that category. We had seventy total resignations last year compared to thirteen fourteen, we had sixty-seven. You can see the trend has been increasing slightly since ten and eleven school year. We had fourteen retirements, which was down in the previous year of twenty-one. Some of that may be because of the change that has been implemented into our retire rehire system. We had twenty-nine transfers and those transfers are counted by anybody that's moving from one building to the next versus the next line of in-building transfers and that's anybody that's transferring from one position to another position within the same school. That number looks pretty inflated, seventy-nine people changing jobs. But some of that was because we have a number of schools that have taken on the looping philosophy in their buildings and we document each one of those changes. So if I was a kindergarten teacher going to a first grade classroom, that would count as a transfer as well. We've had a couple more schools that have taken that on. So all total that's netted a hundred and five positions that we've been looking for. Again, some history here, where we started in those open positions from the previous slide. Last year was eight and this is a breakdown by each level of what we had positions that were open. So we had three positions in the elementary, two in the intermediate and three at the high school level. And this just tells you which positions that we had open in each one of those places. Hard-to-fill positions, we have point-five occupational therapist positions that we're not able to fill. This is really a good stat, I didn't put history on there, but this is down actually a lot from where we were in the past. Being able to hire all of our speech-language pathologists is something that we're able to do and that was a huge thing for us as well as the school sites. And I think there was actually four open positions the previous school year of this. So to be down to just a point-five and probably the reason for that not being filled is because it's just a halftime, just a little more difficult to fill those. Again, this kind of gives you a breakdown of where we were at historically. Eight unfilled positions, you can go back through and look, three and a half, five teaching. This one here is the big one, two thousand seven, two thousand eight, we had thirty-one unfilled teaching positions that year. We're gonna have a significant amount this year as well. This gives you a breakdown of our resignations that we've had. Again, there's some history there. Last year we had nine people that resigned in June. We have liquidated damages in each of those months, so in June it's four hundred, July it's a thousand. Anything after the first of August goes to two thousand. So we had nine that resigned last year in June, four more in July. We didn't have any prior to the first day of school, but we ended up having nine after the first day of school started. Some of those were medical issues, things like that that we had, that people came up and weren't able to continue, but they still counted as resignations. Where we recruited, again, this has increased over the years. As I updated the PowerPoint and looked at this, I think we only went to six states in the thirteen-fourteen school year. That's up to eleven now. Just our reach in terms of recruiting has had to increase as it's been harder and harder to fill positions. So this gives you an idea of some of the places that we've traveled along the way. I'm on the road from the end of February until third week in April, usually going to recruiting fairs. I can't do them all, so we recruit the help of principals and staff members to do some of those things. We have multiple things going on at once. That third week of April has typically been when we went to Michigan and sent a team there. This year during that week, we had five teams on the road at different places during that week along. Five teams of recruiters. So this tells you a little bit about where we go. We sent a team this year for the first time to New York to do some recruiting. Part of what we do is, you know, making contacts obviously and evaluating where we're going and how the recruiting is and talking to other recruiters and seeing if there's pockets of places that are good for other school districts. And we've been hearing good things about New York, a lot of kids needing jobs, wanting jobs. So we sent a group there. We were lucky enough to have a person that we hired from New York, so we sent her and her administrator there for the first time. Also, Ohio was in this year. We have a team that typically goes to Michigan and we split that team up this year and then we went to Ohio to have explore that to see what it was like. It didn't serve us very well in terms of going to Ohio, but I think that will change in the future. Ohio had an early retirement program that they implemented, so there was more jobs there than there had been in the past, so kids weren't very eager to leave. But that's going to change from this year moving forward. We talked to a gentleman there that was right next to us and a very similar school in terms of size, a number of certificate employees, and he was shocked that he was gonna have twenty-six openings this year that he was gonna have to fill this past year. And so we talked to him about, you know, his underretirement and what would that look like next year when we forward without the retirement system being there? And he said, "I'll be surprised if I have five openings next year." So again, that may be something that will help us down the road in terms of our recruiting.
I'm sorry, can you hear us? How's the trip, Truman?
I went and we didn't hire a single person from Truman. But they do produce a lot of good candidates, but we just couldn't get them to come to Garden City. So a lot of good people that I talked to there. This is where we're at right now with summer hires. Last year, we had eighty-three summer hires. This year, to this point, we have fifty-nine that we've hired. Five people that were licensed rehired, so again, dealing with some license issue, we hired back. And then one person that's retired, rehired, and then you don't know about this, we just checked. So this kind of gives you a breakdown. Last year when we did new teacher orientation, we talked to them, we hired from fifteen different states last year. And so I went through and rather than just changing out the numbers, I added another column to do some comparisons. You can see, the majority of our hires are in-state and, you know, we want to keep that. We want to have those in-state recruits here, be able to get them to Garden City. Gives us a better chance to keep people retained in the district. And so we're right along that same line of thirty-nine this year, forty last year. Here, to me, is a significant change. We've, again, been recruiting in Michigan probably nine years now. That number for Michigan hires has been up as high as thirty. It's been going down a little bit each of the last few years. Last year we hired fourteen. This current past season, we only hired six people from Michigan. So that's something that's, if you wanna say it's a honey hole, might be drying up a little bit. Again, you can look down through the areas here from different states. I think if you look at our neighboring states in terms of keeping that kind of local, people that don't have to be so far away from home, you know, we're not having very good luck there in terms of moving people from local states, neighboring states into Kansas. Colorado went from four to one, Oklahoma three to zero. There's different changes, but we did increase the number of Texans a little bit, um... So again, nineteen states represented in thirteen fourteen and ten that we've been able to hire to do or from in this fourteen fifteen school year. Recruiting expenses, so this kind of gives you a breakdown of where our money goes. In terms of career fairs, promotion, this would generally be about materials that we have promoting Garden City. That's expense that maybe is a little bit up and down as we buy things, generally speaking, in some bold with our advertising that we use to hand out, different than advertising from the newspaper or those kinds of things that we might use. So we didn't add a whole lot of expense with promotion. Interviewing expenses, that's with hotel expense and mileage expense that we have for our candidates. We do try to offset some of their expense when they come in for psychic interviews. And so that's where those dollars are allocated to and then again to advertising. Part of our increase in advertising this year has been due to the type of positions that we've had open and just doing a little more advertising for some of those hard-to-fill positions. High school principal, we advertise differently than we do for a teaching position. Trying to hire our CFO position, we advertise differently for that. So we had a little bit more expense than we have had in the past. Overall expenses, again, this is kind of the total dollar figure that we're working with. It's up a little bit. We went through a little dip here in ten and eleven with our budget expenses and now it's kind of leveled off. And that's kind of our total dollar figure that we work with.
I'm sorry, is that also include superintendent search or is that a new category?
We also use advertising for that as well.
Okay, so we had three major positions that we're not gonna be having, hopefully, in search for...
Are you trying to send a message?
This year, correct?
Right.
So we may see that go back down a little bit.
Yes. And advertising is not cheap. You know, we get some things through the newspaper and we get some connections with those newspapers online also, but it is very expensive to run ads and do those kinds of things. So yes, we're, I'm hopeful too that we're not gonna have those jobs to fill as well. Not just a Garden City issue. I think that you've all, you know, had information about the recruiting process and how tough it is. Garden City historically, I think, has, it's been tough to recruit in Garden City. Geography is not our friend. I don't think it's just in our school district either. I think we can talk to businesses and things like that, they deal with the same thing. Hospitals trying to recruit doctors, you know, it's just tough to get people to come to Garden City. Not that we don't have a lot of great things to offer, but again, the geography of it makes it hard. However, there are some, there's more information coming out about how tough it is. And this article was given on the seventh of July from KASB. And they have a website, it's Kansas Teachers TeachingJobs.com. And there's five hundred jobs posted as of the seventh of July, which again, the article goes on to say that it's twice as many as usual for that time of year. So seventh of July, you're a month away from most schools starting. It's a statewide site and there's still five hundred unfilled positions at that point. So it's not just Garden City. Number of teachers leaving the state, retiring have been increasing, you can see this in the article. Eleven, twelve school year, there were three hundred ninety-nine that left the state. Twelve hundred and sixty retired and as of the fourteen fifteen school year, that number dropped to six hundred fifty-four and twenty-three hundred and twenty-six teachers retired. Again, the Kansas State Board of Education made a decision here not too long ago to allow six innovative school districts to hire teachers that were not licensed and fall in the same license category. If this was just a Garden City issue, you wouldn't have people making those kinds of decisions around the state. Some of those are pretty eye-opening for me, Blue Valley being one of those. Kansas City, Kansas being another district that was allowed to do that. Shawnee Mission this year had an early retirement incident at the end of last year and so they were hiring between two and three hundred people. I talked to one of the deputy HR people at our recruiting fair, Truman Ashley, and she said that they would hire between two and three hundred. So between two school districts in the Kansas City area, they were looking for six hundred teachers. And so again, it just makes it very competitive when everybody's looking for the same types of candidates. And the number of candidates that are being produced through our colleges is going down. Eastern Michigan is one of the places that we've been historically in our recruiting efforts. And Wade Nissen, in charge of the career fair there, told us that the number of kids that were going through the career fair last year was down fifty percent from where it was the previous year. So it's just getting harder and harder to fill positions. Dale Dennis talked a little bit about the retirement system that we have in Kansas. We currently have twenty-four hundred teachers that are participating in our retire rehire process. Based on some decisions that were made in Topeka, those people will only be allowed to do that their grandfather gave them for two more years. And so there's a possibility that there's gonna be twenty-four hundred more openings in two years. Now people can still choose to work, but in doing so, they have to give up their retirement benefit in order to continue to collect money from the school district. So that may be tougher yet. As far as local goes, I have talked to another school district that's very similar to us in terms of makeup and location and they are facing the same types of things with their hiring process. Currently, about the same percentage. We're probably in the six percent range in terms of openings and they're about five percent that they still have open, based on their needs for the start of the school year. So what does that mean for our plans? Really hasn't changed a whole lot. We're gonna continue to enlarge our applicant pool, with quality applicants. Again, that's just lots of road miles, contacts with colleges, kind of leads into the next one, continuing efforts in Kansas State. We've done pretty well in terms of hiring people in the state, if you look at our numbers being comparative from year to year. But I would really like to establish some relationships with people in the colleges that are in charge of student placements, getting more student teachers to come to Garden City. Maybe setting up some time where we get some of those people that are in that decision-making to get to come to Garden City and really see what we have to offer in terms of our school, our classrooms, our facilities. And hopefully, they can help us become salesmen of what a good school district that we have. So I'll be working on developing some of those personal relationships with those folks through the universities. Continuing to involve staff members in the recruiting process, this is really a benefit. I know that we take teachers out of the classrooms to do this, but as an administrator, you're gonna make contact with people and you give them a sales pitch, so to speak, of why they should come to Garden City. But it is so valuable to have staff members there that have walked in their shoes, that have made that transition, that can just reassure them, and I'll use Michigan as an example. But having Michigan kids that have maybe sat around for a year or two or three without using their degrees and then have made the move to Garden City and been successful and like it here. And getting those people to reassure them that it's not just an administrator giving you a sales pitch that really it is a great place to work. So that's a very valuable asset to our recruiting efforts and we'll continue to do that and try to make those connections with some more candidates. Exploring options to increase funding for recruiting, that may be looked on as a few different things, not just in terms of dollars itself, but looking at would it make a difference if we increased sign bonuses and things like that? Which again, kind of leads into the next thing, studying retention rates. This is something that's in the works now. We'll be developing a committee probably in September to look at things that we can do to retain the staff that we currently have. Talking to them and seeing what things that they would see as value that our school district can do to help them, what would entice them to stay. We give out exit surveys and taking that feedback from our staff if they do leave and why they're leaving and we'll evaluate some of those things to see, again, what are things that we can control and have the offset or entice people to stay longer periods of time so that we don't have the turnover that we've had in the story.
On this exit surveys, do you also look at teacher, the in-building or even out-of-building transfers, why they're leaving one thing for another position?
We don't give an exit survey for the staff members that would be going from one building to the next. In-house, is that what you're...
Well, either way, yeah, that they're here, but they're either going from middle school, high school or going from communications to science and then intermediate.
Not something that we've typically done, not to say that we wouldn't do that or really that could be some of the information the committee would gather in terms of that. This would be more about why are they choosing to leave, perhaps, in this people, I suppose.
Right, but what I'm thinking is if a communication teacher is frustrated with what's going on and so they decide to do science and social studies, say, then that new person from Michigan coming into that communications may be experiencing the same issues and then leave us the next year, so if we can maybe, I don't know.
Could be something that you would look at. Study ways to create, to grow your own program. We really feel like we have some resources in Garden City that we'd like to tap into, so we're gonna be, we're going to high school and see if we can develop a pipeline, if you will, between what our fax kids have from the high school to maybe to Juco to maybe another university where they can accelerate their process in becoming a teacher and what doors can we open up for them in order to do that? And so that's something else that we'll be exploring in the near future.
Can you put in any of that, for instance?
Grow your own program.
No, no, what is it? You said fax.
Family consumer science, sorry, applicants. And there's some other things that we can be doing to be innovative, like out-of-your-box thinking, if you will. We're gonna have to do that in order to try to reach our staff that we have and be creative and the fact that we are looking at thirty-eight positions that we still have to fill. It's gonna take us a lot of creativity in order to do that. So we're gonna be meeting with the door principals on Wednesday and sitting down with them and looking at the openings that we have and seeing what needs to be done in order to address those openings, maybe on an individual scale with, do we have to, do we have to double up some, not necessarily double, but do we have to increase class size in order to not have a position filled? Do we need to look at getting long-term subs? And if so, how many of those are we gonna need to get school off and running? So we're gonna have some of those meetings starting Wednesday. One other thing we'll be doing is adding Pennsylvania into the recruiting schedule again. This is just from contacts over several years with different HR people. They think that is a really good recruiting fair and a little bit like Michigan, they introduce lots of candidates and not so many jobs for those candidates. And so we'll be exploring that next year as a new recruiting spot for us.
Any questions?
I have one. How many, how many positions do we have that need filled right now today?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. And on the slide, unfilled positions, what's the difference between that?
Unfilled positions is the number eight is actually looking at.
Right.
Yeah, eight is what we started the year off last year that went unfilled. So we were not able to fill eight of our teaching positions that we needed. That's, we started the year off with eight openings.
So that's part of the thirty-eight?
Well, no, that's from last year. That was, we started our school year off last year with eight unfilled positions. We currently have thirty-eight open positions that we still have to fill.
How many of those are, do you have, did you break those down by elementary and high school, middle school?
We do.
Okay, I don't even know, I just asked.
Yeah, I mean, we're in...
From thirty-eight through K through twelve?
Yeah, everything. And they're fairly spread out, there's not necessarily one area that's, I guess there is an area that's a little scary, it is elementary. And again, just based on historically, elementary has not been an area that's been hard to fill those positions. But last year we saw it where we had trouble filling elementary positions. So if you were to make some generalities, you know, secondary math, secondary science, those kinds of things, historically have been hard to fill. Elementary not so much, but last year we saw that where we were having trouble getting some of those elementary positions. This year is, it wasn't an anomaly last year, now it's becoming a trend. And so we do have some elementary positions that have went unfilled and that we're still continuing to work on that. So, but they are spread fairly evenly between the two of the four levels. Yes, ma'am?
Do you have a reason why maybe that started or, those elementary teachers would never have been leaving for a specific reasons or are there any different grade levels?
I don't, I mean, based on looking at our numbers and the resignations, I don't think our numbers are changing in terms of the amount of turnover that we're having. The problem is, is the number of candidates that we're able to have. And if you're seeing, as an example of the Michigan, Eastern Michigan career fair, fifty percent less candidates going through the door for that career fair.
So you don't really have more, a higher percent, maybe, you just have less of them?
That's right. And I think that's what, you know, we as Garden City are certainly facing, but it's also certainly in the states where there's five hundred open positions, twice as much they say as there was a year, you know, in the past or in that same time. So the number of candidates that are, the number of kids that are going into education, I think, is diminishing. So that makes it, of course, harder to fill because you have less people to choose from when you recruit. So I don't, again, I don't believe it's our numbers increasing in terms of our turnover. I do think it's just a matter of we have less candidates to choose from.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you.
Has everyone had a chance to sign up for a committee, or committees, has it gone across?
It's been over here.
Okay. Dana, do you have any questions about what the new committees are?
How many, how many people could sit on, just what lines are?
No, I think it depends. Negotiations can only be two, calendaring can only be three, and the rest would be free, wouldn't they?
If there is one committee, we put the number aligned that would be appropriate, but if you have one that you have a real interest in, sometimes we'll appoint an alternate. And so let me know which one you would be interested in if the line falls. We can see if that's, maybe we can do an alternate.
I was gonna say, there's only one line.
Dr. Carlin, can you read us the organizational chart?
Very briefly. We do have a board policy that kind of outlines our administrative organization that's been updated with the changes that we're putting in place this spring. You'll also see kind of underneath there a list of topics or responsibilities that go with each of the positions. So we've been kind of fine-tuning that over the months of May and June as we've got our leadership team in place. So we're not asking for your approval on that tonight, but we probably will at the next meeting. So if you have any questions about that, feel free to ask now or contact me or at the next meeting.
Any questions today? Were there open discussions? Anyone have anything for open discussion?
A lot of the principals and the teachers will come back on Monday. It's official. We weren't the other two-hundred-and-five-day staff, other than the principals.
Quite literally, the principals and the building's secretaries, that's most of our two-hundred-and-five. And counselors have some extra days, they don't quite get to the two-hundred-and-five generally. But you'll see them, but you'll see, if you drive around our schools right now, or you drive around on the weekends, you'll see cars there. You'll have teachers that are in these buildings already, some that are in there all summer long that are working to them, although they're technically not under contract and so... But the activity level will exponentially pick up as we get closer to the start.
Anything else? Anything else?
I would just add one thing. I think we might have said it out in the so you may know, but BBS has a big grand opening happening on Monday, and that'll be the first low-power FM radio station ever to be operated out of Garden City High School. I think it's something that's been, I'm not even saying it's... Eleven years in the works, so the licensing and everything is complete, and they're planning a big grand opening on the third, I think at nine AM, so...
Eight forty-five is the remaining time?
Eight forty-five, so if you're available and wanna stop and check them out, it's pretty equal operation.
Anything else? The next meeting of the Board of Education will take place on Monday, August tenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six PM, in the Board of Education. Can I have a motion? Move for you, Jan. Okay. I have seconded, Mr. Mike Corian, all in favor. It's your turn, Ms.